It is ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber? Mr. Alatorre is here, which I can't believe, but he's here. It's ten minutes after ten and we have Mr. Alatorre, Mrs. Picas here. We have three members, we need seven more for a quorum.
We have four members present. Six members we need for a quorum. Of those members that are present in the building, please come down. Mr. Ferraro is getting upset. Hi Tammy. Mr. Burnson has arrived.
We have Mr. Alatorre, Mr. Burnson, Mr. Hernandez, Mrs. Picas, Mr. Ridley Thomas. We have six members, we need four for a quorum. Sergeant, would you see if you can go find two members that come into the council chamber? Mr. Bernardi and Mr. Browdy. Ms. Galanter. Mr. Wax and Mr. Yaroslavsky, would you please come to the council chamber? You want to start? Supposed to be. The council will come to order. Mrs. Picas, you have a presentation.
Mr. President and members of the council, it's my pleasure today to welcome some very dignified guests to the city council and to honor them with a resolution. Most notable, of course, is Tammy the Recycling Eagle, and I'll tell you more about her. And this is her creator, Peter Kachak. And this is Winifred Meiser, who has written a children's story called "The Mystery of the Missing Trees." And Peter created Tammy because Tammy was able to solve the mystery of the missing trees. Tammy the Recycling Eagle has been created not only to solve this story, but the whole, and I'll ask Winifred to tell you more about it in a little while, the whole purpose of this is to encourage children to recycle. And not only do encourage them to recycle, but to inspire them to get their parents to understand the importance of recycling and to practice it and to do it at every opportunity. So she may not look like it, but Tammy is a really vital educational tool in this whole new environmental ethos that we have these days of the importance of recycling. Tammy has made many, many appearances at a number of local elementary schools and at Lanark Park. And she was the winning entry for the Canoga Park Chamber of Commerce float during the 1991 Memorial Day Parade. She also was the theme for the Make a Difference Day, which is a children's coloring contest encouraging children to participate in recycling efforts that both save trees and help to keep landfill space from being filled up too quickly. There is a Tammy the Recycling Eagle activity and coloring book, "Learning the New Three Rs: Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle." And it has games and puzzles that teach about recycling. And for the benefit of the parents, it includes telephone numbers for agencies that children's parents can call for information about recycling and other environmental concerns. So I am really delighted to award this resolution to Peter Kachak for creating Tammy. And I'm going to ask Peter and Winifred to tell you a little bit about their part and what was the inspiration for them in creating the story and Tammy. Because it is a wonderful educational tool which we are using here in the city of Los Angeles along with our guru and a couple of other wonderful things to make certain that kids grow up understanding how important recycling is. And we all know what an influence children can be on their parents, and that's working too. So Peter, congratulations for creating Tammy. Tammy, we are thrilled to have you with us today. I think, I don't know whether you want to talk to us or just be present so we can look at you and enjoy you. Winifred, we're delighted to have you too. Peter, do you want to begin or shall Winifred begin? Winifred, okay.
I'd just like to tell you a very short part of the story about how Tammy became the Recycling Eagle. We think about the effects of recycling and shortage of goods on ourselves. But actually, in the forests, the animals and the birds were being concerned about the missing trees. They wondered why there was fewer and fewer trees every year and not so many places to put their nests. And so Tammy, a very young bald eagle, volunteered to go out and find out what happened to all the trees. And so she and her friend the North Wind went and they flew over across the whole earth and they discovered that people were taking the trees and cutting them down to make furniture and paper and pencils and books for schools. And it seemed like they really needed these things. So Tammy felt that she'd go back and tell her friends that we have to share the trees because the people need them too. And on the way home, they discovered that they saw all the people on trash day putting out a lot of things that she had seen them making from the trees and the trash and then taking them to the landfill. And she was really upset about this and she wondered why are they doing this? Why not share them? And so the North Wind explained that the people didn't understand about recycling. And so she got very upset and explained to Tammy about what recycling was. And so Tammy saw some children and she explained to them about if they just would recycle, then there would be more trees in the forest for the animals and birds and we could still have all the things that we need. And so that was the message that all the children learned that if they just recycled, there would be more for everybody. And so Tammy promised that she would tell all the children who promised that they would tell all the parents and friends. And soon everybody would know about recycling. So now that I've told you that, you be sure and don't forget to go out and tell everybody about the new three Rs: Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle.
Thank you. Peter, do you want to say a word?
Yes. I would like to thank the city council and Councilwoman Joy Picas for giving this recognition. And especially, you know, when you become a parent, something happened to you and that's what's happened to me when I become a parent. And that's my beautiful daughter Patricia. And I would like to thank her for being my motivation. Also my wife Barbara. Winifred Meiser for being sort of engine behind the whole project. And three ladies that are not here, but they've been very instrumental in the whole project. One is Marie Tolbert from Volunteer Center in Van Nuys. Dulce de Montenac from United Nations Environmental Program. And also Nina Marson from Eco Expo. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Tammy, wonderful to have you.
Thank you, Mrs. Picas.
Maybe we can take a minute and Tammy can meet the council members if they want to come up and shake her hand. She's so attractive. I don't know whether she's real...
I thought Tammy was a council member.
Cuter than most.
Okay. We have a lot of resolutions today, so let's be patient. Yeah, let's go into a session first.
Alatorre, Bernardi, Burnson, Browdy, Flores, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Picas, Ridley Thomas, Wax, Walters, Wu, Yaroslavsky, Ferraro. Eleven council members present and in quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, the council will come to order. This is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the tenth day of April. I hope you all paid your property taxes. 1992, and we're currently, there are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And we are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area. We're also monitored by council phone. Now the... Mr. Burnson and Mr. Browdy.
And Mr. Taylor. Mr. President, members of the council, this is Building and Safety Week. And myself and Councilman Browdy are honored to present this resolution to Tim Taylor, who will accept it on behalf of the Building and Safety Department. I'm going to turn this over to Marvin because he is Chair of Public Safety, but I do want to say a few words before I do and then he can make the presentation. I don't know if a lot of people realize what an outstanding department our Building and Safety Department is. They are recognized throughout the world for their position on public safety, particularly in the area of seismic reform. And they are very, very fastidious in bringing to the council's attention things that need to be done such as Division 88, which is considered to be the Magna Carta of reconstruction and building laws on unreinforced masonry buildings. So at this time, I'd like to add that and congratulate Tim and Warren O'Brien and the entire department. And I'll turn it over to Marvin so he can make the presentation. Marvin?
Yes, the safety of the city, of course, is our prime responsibility and there are probably more laws on the books that we have to enforce with regard to public safety than all the rest of the city put together. And that our department should be able to do that as well and without corruption as they have done is a testimony of quality and integrity that makes us all proud. So Hal and I are delighted to present this resolution on behalf of the people of Los Angeles and the city council to the Department for Building and Safety Week. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you very much.
Tim, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I think that Building and Safety Week really indicates that and shows that building safety is no accident. And it's partially because of the dedicated staff in Building and Safety Department work hard and our goal is building safety. And also, I'd like to thank the council for their support and all the many laws and processes that we need done to make buildings safe in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, Mr. Taylor, and congratulate all the men and women that work for the department. Mr. Ferraro for presentation.
Could we have a delegation from Berlin is here, led by Senator Peter Riddensky? Want to come forward? Members of the council, we have the honor of having this delegation who've come here primarily to celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of our sister-city relationship with Berlin. We were the first sister-city with Berlin. We still have a very special agreement with them.
We still have a very special agreement with them. They have other cities now, but they're not the same type as ours. Ours is number-one quality. So I just want to, first of all, introduce the other members that are here. I guess I left it up there. Senator Peter Rodinsky is here, Hans Fonsel, who has been here many times, is almost a native of Los Angeles, Jürgen Graff, who is also here, and of course, the Council General for Germany here in Los Angeles is Dr. Cornell Mitternag. Peter, let me, on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, in this very special relationship, give you this certificate of welcome, signed by the mayor and myself, and we want to welcome you and hope your visit here is very pleasant. We will be planting more trees today in the Berlin Forest in Griffith Park, and we're just glad to have you here in Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you very much for this welcome, Mr. President, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very proud, as a member of Berlin Senate, to bring you the greetings and the best wishes of the governing mayor of Berlin, to say a lot of thanks to our sister-city of Los Angeles. As the president just said, we celebrate this year, the 25th anniversary of our relationships, and this has always been a very fruitful and good relationships, and we are very happy about. After the reunification of Germany and the reunification of Berlin, we Berliners are often asked, "How do you feel now?" Let me put this in a short story. I think we have the feeling like a man who has fallen down from the top of a skyscraper, past the 16 floors, and is asked by another looking out of the window, "How do you feel?" And the answer is, "So far, so good." As you probably know, Berlin has been in the last decades the symbol of the division of our country and at the same time of Europe. Today, Berlin is a workshop for the unity of Germany and a point of integration for all the Germans and Europeans in East and West. We are very proud now to be the capital of Germany again, and I think it's very good for us to have such good friends and partners like we have it in the city of Los Angeles, and I think we will look forward to a bright and good fruitful future of partnership again. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Senator. We're very honored to have you in our council chamber, and we hope your visit to Los Angeles is going to be very, very pleasant.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Mark Ridley-Thomas for presentation.
Thank you very kindly, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm elated to make this presentation to Althea Blackshear, who's a member of the city family in an official way as a result of her marking 36 years of city service. Came to the city of Los Angeles from New Orleans, Louisiana, with her family. Having graduated from Jefferson High School and Los Angeles City College, she began her career with the city of Los Angeles in August of 1953, and was assigned to the Lydery Department as a messenger clerk. There she promoted to clerk typist in November of 57. She was then transferred to the city administrative officer in March of 1962, where she promoted to senior clerk typist. Well, it goes on, in 62, she was a key participant in the conception and installation of a new numerical system that was implemented for filing, which enabled the CAO to locate the numerous reports and other materials maintained by the office, for which we are most appreciative and have become reliant on that system. This proved so successful that it was a program that maintains its effectiveness until the very day. It's important to note that during her years of city service, Althea has continually handled the most difficult and demanding assignments. She has received many commendations for her dedication to duty and tireless efforts and performance of duties, which often required working long hours and many personal sacrifices. Her many abilities have earned her the respect of the entire CAO staff, which could always rest assured when Althea was in charge. She has earned a title of honorary office historian, and you can well imagine why, having been there for the length of time that she has. We're delighted that she is a member of the National Council Negro Women, the Mary McLeod Batum Section, and the Women's Christian Temperance Union of Southern California. Althea's retirement plans include becoming more involved in these activities. She also looks forward to spending more time with her family and friends. And so it's on this occasion that the mayor, as well as the entirety of the City Council, wishes to recognize and salute, as well as commend, Althea Blackshear for her 36 years of dedicated service to the city of Los Angeles, and further extends our best wishes for her future health, prosperity, and happiness.
Mr. Comrie, did you want to say a few words before Ms. Blackshear?
Just one brief comment for all that technical jargon that was in the scroll. This is the woman that maintains what we call a central file. When you call for research, or the mayor calls, or the public, she can find it, the thousands and thousands of files we've produced over the years. Yes. Critical in use not only for you, but for the staff, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time we research something new. She created originally, and it's been automated recently, so it's in good hands for the future, and we thank her very much.
I'd like to thank Councilman Thomas and Mr. Comrie and all the council for this wonderful resolution, and I might add, the years seem like only a few, because I've enjoyed working, I've learned so much from the city of Los Angeles, and most of all, I have lasting memories of wonderful friends and acquaintances, and I want to thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, we wish to acknowledge her family who's here, her husband Percy Blackshear, her son Rodney Blackshear, her mother, Ms. LaJohn, her sister Janet Granichardt. All right? Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas. Mr. Hernandez, you have a presentation? You were late, remember? I always, I go according to the one you come in.
Mr. President, members of the council, you know, every now and then, some special things get to happen to us here in the city of Los Angeles, not because it's an organized program or a funded program, but it happens primarily because people care. I had an opportunity on a Saturday morning to go do a paint-out, a community paint-out, cleaning graffiti, and all I knew was that I was going to go to the Highland Park Anti-Crime Unit to paint out some graffiti. When I showed up, I saw a group of young people, basically from the ages of 10 to 14, with their brushes, their paint, and they went to work. I also found out that the person who organizes them works for Northeast Newspapers, and her name is Christine Mansion, and she's present right now. But Christine kind of started just getting kids together to do something on Saturday mornings, and she started, I guess, with about 15. Now she has 84. It's not a formal program, where, again, we're funding it. It's something that's happening on its own out there in Los Angeles. The young people who are participating with her are very committed to the program. Christine only wants to figure out how to get some buses to take them to Magic Mountain and get them some hamburgers every now and then when they do the work. But I was just so impressed that they planned an awards night, and I went to Buchanan Elementary School to present certificates to all the children, and then I was able to present Christine's certificate at the Highland Park Chamber of Commerce, because a lot of her projects have been basically funded by the chamber. But there was one young woman who wasn't able to get her certificate because she had a broken leg, and her name is Lucy Quinteros, and I thought it would be appropriate if I brought her to City Council with some of her other allies who helped clean the walls. Would you please stand up? And I want you to know, there's 84 of them. And something tells me that because of the efforts of Christine Mansion, these are not going to be people we're going to be worried about painting graffiti. But hopefully, because of those same efforts, there'll be people that will be able to look forward to serving in leadership roles in the city of Los Angeles and trying to be role models for some of the other children. So with that, Lucy, I want to present to you a certificate of appreciation for all your work in the Highland Park area.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to present Christine Mansion to everybody. We did honor her at a chamber meeting, but I just think that the work she started by herself and the commitment she's shown to these young people, and the way she's been doing what she's been doing is just a fantastic experience, and it's one of those other stories we could tell about people in Los Angeles. But Christine, maybe you would like to say a few words?
I'd just like to say that these young children should be highly commended for what they've done. They do not get paid, they don't receive anything, they are volunteers, they have called me to join. They work very hard, they work several hours during the day. I just wish a lot more people in the community of Los Angeles would get involved. At this time, the children really have befriended Councilman Hernandez and have signed a thank-you card that they have also made, and we would like to present that to him for all of his help.
This is the kind of stuff that makes me proud to be a city councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. That's really wonderful that they take the time and interest to help clean our city. It's too bad we have to do that. All right, Ms. Galanter?
Mr. President, members of the council, most of you missed the opening of Lucky Supermarket in Crenshaw last week, but the Crenshaw High School Elite Choir did not. And I asked them, as I listened to them and as I heard about some of their achievements, I asked them to come and join us in council so that we might recognize this really impressive group of young people who have quite a variety of achievements. They recently returned from a trip to Nice, France, where they were the U.S. ambassadors to the Worldwide Music Festival. They were invited guests, they also managed to come home with several awards, including the highest honors among all the countries who were represented. They received first place, highest honors, and best performance from the Jamaica Jazz Festival in Montego Bay, Jamaica, for four years in a row, and they appear regularly. They're working their way into the entertainment business. We should all be so lucky. Besides appearing regularly at city functions, they have done several television shows. They did an HBO special with Whoopi Goldberg, they were on the Lou Rawls Parade of Stars, and they're now working on a movie for the Disney Organization. So pay attention. We have their director, Iris Stevenson, here with us, and the Crenshaw High School Elite Choir. Ladies and gentlemen, come on up. You've heard from all the athletic teams at Crenshaw, this is another one of the activities that shows that all the high schools in the city of Los Angeles have something wonderful to contribute to this city, and let me tell you, these folks are good. Iris, want to say something?
Thank you, Mrs. Galanter. I wanted to thank the, really, the City Council and the people of Los Angeles for assisting us in our trip to Nice, France, and the various functions that we've had. It's been people like Ruth Galanter and Mark Ridley-Thomas, Bob Gay, and those individuals that contributed heavily towards our campaign, and we thank you so much for all that you've done for us. We will sing two selections for you. We also want to say that without the support of our principal, Mrs. Jewel Boutte, we would not be able to actually go on the field trips and et cetera, but we thank her for her support also. We will sing two numbers, a tribute to America, An Arrangement of America the Beautiful, and the second one will be The Greatest Love of All.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, it's all right now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh.
I believe the children are beautiful. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride to make it easier. Let the children flatter. Remind us how we use.
Everybody's searching for a hero. People need someone to look up to. I never found anyone to fulfill my needs. A lonely place to be. So I learned to depend on me.
I decided long ago never to walk in anyone's shadow. If I fail, if I succeed, at least I live as I believe. No matter what they take from me, they can't take away my dignity. The greatest, the greatest, is everything to me. I found the greatest.
That was born inside of me.
The greatest love is easy to achieve. Loving to love yourself, it is the greatest love of all.
And if by chance I'm special.
Special for you. They treat me love, yes, oh, yes. They treat you. They love you. Find your strength. Find your strength. In love.
Find your strength. Find your strength. In love.
And let that be an inspiration for the rest of the meeting. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to have you here. Please come back.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. The chair recognizes Mr. Wax.
Top that.
All right, Joel, try and top that one.
Joel, would you sing for us?
In other words, Joel.
Give it up.
Yes, Mr. President. Hugh Houser will now sing. Come on, Hugh. He's done everything else. This is his real test. Now, Mr. President, I wanted to take a moment this morning to introduce to you Hugh Houser and someone, of course, that we all know, Georgia Rosenberry from Project Restore. As you've walked through the third floor, you've seen the Lindbergh Beacon that has been in the third floor here for some time. As many of you know the history of that, that beacon was given to the city by the Chamber of Commerce in 1928 when the City Hall was built. And in April, I think it was April 26th of 1928, on the opening ceremonies of this City Hall, President Coolidge in the White House pressed a button and that beacon went on and became a part of a very important part of the history of this city. I think it could be seen from as far as 60 miles away and stayed on the top of City Hall until World War II broke out. And then it has been in storage ever since and was recently discovered after a search by General Services at the behest of Project Restore. That beacon is going to be formally, what's the word, rededicated next week. Unfortunately, in what's become a pattern around here, it'll be at the airport at 10:30, so only the mayor will be there. But that's another story, members of the council. In the meanwhile, something better has happened. Channel 28 is going to do a half hour special. And that's really exciting because there is nobody who has captured the history, the eclecticism, the vibrancy, the flavor of life in Southern California more than Hugh Houser has over all of the years with his video logs and now statewide. But to be doing this special on Channel 28 on the Lindbergh Beacon is really going to be history renewed and something to remember for a long, long time ahead. So I'm really excited that this is going to happen. And Hugh is here today along with Georgia, and I thought that they might say a few words to you about the importance of this and the importance of the Project Restore effort that we have been funding and raising money from the private sector to match, but the importance of preserving our history and renewing it and regenerating it and making it a living history. And so Hugh and Georgia, I'd like to introduce both of you at this time, and I don't know which one wants to go first here, but Georgia will sing first.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Project Restore is proud to place in public exhibit the restored Lindbergh Beacon, which has not been seen by the public for more than 50 years. The beacon sat on top of City Hall, as Mr. Wax said, from 1928 to the early '40s, when it was removed as part of World War II blackouts. One of our goals in Project Restore has been to discover, restore, and exhibit as many of the city's original furnishings and artifacts that have been displaced or lost over the years. We have been successfully discovering last year the last original elevator, which is on display right now in the rotunda, and now the Lindbergh Beacon, which was found in an old city warehouse. I would like to thank very much KCT and Hugh Houser for their phenomenal interest in the cultural and architectural history of the city. And I'm very grateful to the city council for its support the past few years of our restoration efforts. Thank you.
Yeah, Georgia. I'd just like to add one quick note. We originally aired the video log on the Lindbergh Beacon about two years ago on KCT. And at the end of the video log, we asked our viewers to write in with suggestions about where the beacon should be placed. And we had hundreds of letters suggesting everything from back on top of City Hall to Mayor Bradley's front yard. And both of those things weren't really very feasible. So a lot of the people suggested Los Angeles International Airport because for decades, the Lindbergh Beacon not only served as an aviation guide to airplanes coming into our city, but it became a beacon of welcome to people who were choosing to call Los Angeles home. And we thought how appropriate, rather than putting it in a museum or putting it in some private place, that it should be put back in a very public place, the international terminal of Los Angeles International Airport, the Bradley Terminal, where symbolically it would once again welcome visitors and new citizens from all over the world as they arrived at their new home, Los Angeles. So Wednesday morning, the 22nd of April, Mayor Bradley will push the button or flip the switch or whatever he's going to do and relight the beacon, which will once again welcome people to the city of Los Angeles. We're very excited about it. And I know that Georgia, this is her passion and her love, this Project Restore. And I must tell you that the responses we've gotten from that particular video log show, I think, a very deep interest among the citizens of this city and a very strong affection and love for this building and what it represents. It's a neat old building, and anything you can do to help Georgia and help, the idea of bringing it back to its glory, would be very appreciated by the citizens of this city. Thank you very much, and don't forget to tune in Wednesday night, especially if you're a Nielsen family.
Mr. President.
Hugh, thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Wax, I'm going to send a strong letter to the mayor because we are supposed to, we've notified them before that they should not schedule things when we, the council, meets and they ignore it completely. And I will send a strong letter after making a few personal remarks to him.
Mr. President.
Actually, can I change it? I'm acting mayor right now. Can I change that date, Georgia? Mr. Yaroslavsky?
Yes, Hugh, before you leave, I think it's a brilliant solution to the problem of where to put the beacon, as between the mayor's front yard and the airport. Some people think the airport is his front yard, but he's there so often. Just joking, Tom. I wanted to take the opportunity to...
I didn't know I was getting in on all of this.
Appreciate your association with all of my remarks. But, Mr. President, I know that we all know Hugh and we know his work, and Joel has mentioned something about him. I just wanted, as long as you're here, to tell you how much personal pleasure that me and my family get out of your video logs.
Thank you.
I cannot recall a single one that, once I have been watching it, I have ever turned away from. It's one of those things that you have the incredible knack of not only identifying interesting things, but keeping those of us with very short attention spans, keeping our attention for the duration. And I don't know what kind of awards. They don't give Pulitzer's for video logs, but whatever the equivalent is for what you do is what you deserve in many of them. I just think you have done so much to enrich this city and this region and the people in it and to teach us about ourselves and about our own history and our own present. And as long as you're here, I wanted you to hear it personally from me. Thank you for what you do. Keep it up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Yaroslavsky, you have a presentation?
Mr. President, it's my privilege and I think the privilege of the council to have in the council chamber Rabbi Baruch Hekt, who is, I don't know what your official title is these days, but he's running the Chabad Lubavitch organization here in Los Angeles and in Southern California. His father-in-law, Rabbi Kunein, who all of us know and know very well, has been ensconced in Moscow and Russia for the last couple of years, trying to do some important work, trying to get a library out. And in his absence, Rabbi Hekt has been his replacement, if you will. There is no possible replacement for Rabbi Kunein, but Rabbi Hekt is doing his best and doing very well at it. It's my pleasure on behalf of the mayor today. The mayor has proclaimed today as Education Day USA in the city of Los Angeles. And as part of this, I wanted to, part of the mayor's proclamation, I wanted to present this resolution and proclamation to Rabbi Hekt. It cites the activities and the accomplishments and the investment in humanity which the Chabad Lubavitch movement has made here in this city and in this region, not to mention all over the country. Those of us who work in this city know very well of the Chabad's, the Chabad commitment here in Los Angeles, to drug rehabilitation, to the homeless, to education, and especially to education. And today, we honor through Rabbi Hekt the Lubavitch Rabbi, the Lubavitch Rebbe, Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schneerson, who has established through his organization over 1,000 social welfare and educational institutions throughout the world, is universally respected by people of all faiths and revered as a worldwide leader of his community. And he is now entering his 91st year in Brooklyn, New York. He's 91 years old. And whereas under his leadership, over 60 Chabad Lubavitch centers have been established in California since the founding of the West Coast Chabad Lubavitch in 1966, offering hundreds of non-sectarian, nonprofit, social service and educational programs to all people of this state. And under his leadership, Chabad has operated the non-sectarian, as I indicated earlier, nonprofit drug rehabilitation centers for men and women in California since 1969, drug prevention education programs since 1987, and saving the lives of thousands of young people during that period of time. And one of those centers is in my district as well, and we've been very fortunate to have that in the city. And whereas under Rabbi Schneerson's leadership, the Chabad has operated a homeless center in California since 1980, helping hundreds, hundreds more people return from the brink of personal disaster to a normal and mainstream life. And under his leadership, the organization presently operates 23 schools in California dedicated to the secular and spiritual education of more than 2,000 young people each year. And therefore, Tom Bradley, the mayor of the city, on behalf of its citizens, proclaims April 14th, 1992, as Education Day in Los Angeles, the birthday and the start of the 91st year of the Rabbi, the Lubavitch Rebbe, Rabbi Schneerson, and commend him for outstanding leadership and guidance on behalf of the people of our city, our state, and our nation. And, Mr. President, I would, because we don't have to suspend the rules, the mayor has the power to proclaim, and it's my privilege on behalf of Mayor Bradley and to join with him in presenting this proclamation to you, Rabbi Hekt. And if you would please pass on our best wishes and wishes for good health to the Lubavitch Rebbe and also to your father-in-law.
Mr. President, members of the city council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to accept this proclamation on behalf of the worldwide Chabad Lubavitch movement and particularly on behalf of the Rebbe Shlita. This past Tuesday evening, at a national dinner at the Grand Hyatt Hotel in Washington, D.C., honoring the Rebbe's birthday and actually making the National Proclamation of Education Day on April 14th, amongst the commentators, Mr. Elie Wiesel, Justice Scalia was in attendance, many of the United States senators, all were there to...
Those of us who work in this city know very well of the Chabad's commitment here in Los Angeles, to drug rehabilitation, to the homeless, to education, and especially to education. And today, we honor through Rabbi Hekt, the Lubavitch Rabbi, the Lubavitch Rebbe, Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schneerson, who has established, through his organization, over 1,000 social welfare and educational institutions throughout the world, is universally respected by people of all faiths, and revered as a worldwide leader of his community. And he is now entering his 91st year in Brooklyn, New York. He's 91 years old. And whereas under his leadership, over 60 Chabad Lubavitch centers have been established in California since the founding of the West Coast Chabad Lubavitch in 1966, offering hundreds of non-sectarian, nonprofit social service and educational programs to all people of this state. And under his leadership, Chabad has operated the non-sectarian, as I indicated earlier, nonprofit drug rehabilitation centers for men and women in California since 1969, drug prevention education programs since 1987, and saving the lives of thousands of young people during that period of time. And one of those centers is in my district as well, and we've been very fortunate to have that in the city. And whereas under Rabbi Schneerson's leadership, the Chabad has operated a homeless center in California since 1980, helping hundreds, hundreds more people return from the brink of personal disaster to a normal and mainstream life. And under his leadership, the organization presently operates 23 schools in California dedicated to the secular and spiritual education of more than 2,000 young people each year. And therefore, Tom Bradley, the mayor of the city, on behalf of its citizens, proclaims April 14th, 1992, as Education Day in Los Angeles, the birthday and the start of the 91st year of the Lubavitch Rebbe, Rabbi Schneerson, and commend him for outstanding leadership and guidance on behalf of the people of our city, our state, and our nation. And, Mr. President, I would, because we don't have to suspend the rules, the mayor has the power to proclaim, and it's my privilege on behalf of Mayor Bradley, and to join with him in presenting this proclamation to you, Rabbi Hekt. And if you would please pass on our best wishes, and wishes for good health to the Lubavitch Rebbe, and also to your father-in-law.
Okay.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to accept this proclamation on behalf of the worldwide Chabad Lubavitch movement, and particularly on behalf of the Rebbe Shlita. This past Tuesday evening, at a national dinner at the Grand Hyatt Hotel in Washington, DC, honoring the Rebbe's birthday, and actually making the National Proclamation of Education Day on April 14th, amongst the commentators, Mr. Eli Wiesel, Justice Scalia was in attendance, many of the United States senators, all were there to recognize the Rebbe Shlita's selfless dedication to the betterment and the welfare of all mankind. And we here, merely as his emissaries, trying to complete a mission, and trying to live up to the level of dedication that the Rebbe Shlita has, will continue to work forward and forge ahead in a partnership with all of you, many of you I know, Councilman Browdy, who was kind enough to come alight to menorah at our Brentwood ceremony a number of years back, and Councilman Wax, I've had the opportunity to speak to, and especially our good friend Zev, who's been there for us since the days of partying Simchat Torah in UCLA, the Westwood Chabad House. So we thank you all for this proclamation, and we're very honored to be able to receive it, and we look forward to many good, healthy years with each and every one of you, to be able to continue to do the good work, and continue to forge ahead, bringing good happiness and peace to all of our people in Los Angeles and to the people throughout the world. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Yaroslavsky. Mr. Wax, you have a presentation? Oh, yeah, I tried, you did. Okay, any other presentations? If not, let's proceed with the agenda.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Wax moves, Mrs. Walters second. There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
On today's regular agenda, item one, joint report by DOT and CAO relative to cost overruns of Metro Redline on Prop A funds. This item has been also scheduled on Tuesday. Councilwoman Flores is not here today, she's requested continuance to Tuesday, so that both could be considered together.
There's no objections, we'll continue that until Tuesday. Hello? Hold on. Okay, next, members of the council, I have a request from Winifred Smith, to have the public comment period early, because she, we have somebody that's disabled and they're in pain, so is there any objections about having the public comment period at this time? Okay, Winifred Smith?
Thank you, President Ferraro, for the variance in your schedule. One of our people is in pain, and I appreciate this moment, our 10 minutes. We are here to impress upon you, please, the need for immediate increased police presence throughout the city of Los Angeles. We would like to request you to undo the freeze on the police budget that prohibits the hiring of additional police to bring us to the strength authorized, 8,500. To unfreeze the freeze on the civilian help, and also the police equipment that the Police Department has asked for. May I take just a second to present to you the victims that are here that are in pain? First of all, I would like to call to the microphone Ms. Hawes. Karen Hawes, whose brother was murdered in the middle of March, in his bedroom in Los Angeles. Next, I would like to call Ms. Chavez, who will stand here next to me, whose husband was murdered a week ago Sunday, and his orphaned boys are with me. I would like to call Ms. Beverly Toyama, who is president of the Coalition of Block Clubs. We are doing our work in the city, but we do not have police presence. Ms. Toyama is going to carry, for the rest of her life, a steel part in her leg, and she is sitting here in pain. We are glad that we saw joyous occasions here, and magnificent presentations, the graffiti kids, the joyous singing of these boys. I'm sorry that I have to follow them with such pain and misery, and killings that are now prevalent throughout the city of angels.
On March 7th, 1992, the city lost a beautiful man, my brother Gregory Anton Hawes. He was killed by an intruder in his home. And I wonder to myself, how many innocent people will this city have to lose before we really wake up and realize that in the city of Los Angeles, there is much goodness and there is much beauty, but there is also many, many bad things and tragic things that happen. And on the streets, it appears more and more that the criminals are winning, and innocent people and good people are losing. And I hope that you never have to feel what we feel. But I think one way to do that is to protect the people of this city, for the good people, and for everybody. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Councilman Fernandez, can you assist me, please?
You talk to him in Spanish. Habla con él en español. No, pues quiero que pueda decirlo. No tengo palabras favoritas para... Members of the council, she's having a hard time saying a few words. They just buried her husband on Wednesday.
Shot at 12th Avenue in Venice.
And was shot...
Hotgun, and also his friends. They were trying to stop a theft of a car.
But apparently, her husband was shot on 12th and Venice when they were trying to stop a theft of a car.
And his friend also.
And also his friend was shot also.
She was dead. She wants to talk, but she can't. ¿Quieres decir algo? Yo estoy dispuesto a hacer su traducción. ¿Cualquier cosa? Tell him what you want to tell him. Tell the City Council. You tell them in English or Spanish, doesn't matter. Mr. Fernandez will help you. They're lost.
No, hay algo que quiere decir. ¿No hay algo que quieren decir ustedes? Okay. Es gastas, pero no hay problema.
You talk to him after.
Thank you.
Ms. Toyama is here. Ms. Wong, is any member of her family here? Ms. Wong's husband was shot down in the driveway, subsequent to the death of Gregory Hawes. And I guess they're too broken up to be here. But the Korean community is represented by Ms. Hawes. Ms. Toyama is the president of our Coalition of Block Clubs. She is a physical therapist, a graduate of USC, and a devoted member of this community, who was out there fighting thugs. And she got shot, thank goodness, only in the leg, destroying her femur. She will carry this plate for the rest of her life. Being a physical therapist, she is able to cooperate with her doctors. Incidentally, before I sit down, these children don't have a father. The oldest boy is on the cleanup committee from his school, so he has a job. He has a very smart mother, who has now had her 13-year-old son employed immediately. His birthday was Tuesday. Ms. Hawes' sister-in-law left Los Angeles and took her sons to Hawaii.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, President, and members of the council. As Ms. Smith mentioned, I've been quite active in the community. It all started quite a few years ago, when I started in my area, the 1011 Block Club. And I started the club because, number one, I wanted to get to know my neighbors better, and number two, I started to see problems with burglaries and car thefts in the area. And I reside in the Arlington Heights area, in Mr. Holden's 10th Councilmanic District, in the LA Southwest area. And I've become, through my block club, quite active, also with the Southwest Police Department, and very grateful for the various captains that have gone through, and have become also knowledgeable and good friends with the senior lead officers. As Ms. Fred, Ms. Smith mentioned, I'm also the president of the Southwest Crime Prevention Coalition, which meets monthly. It's a coalition of block club presidents within the area. Unfortunately, because most of my members are elderly and they don't want to go out at night, I'm having a little bit of a problem trying to keep that coalition intact. As Ms. Smith mentioned, actually, my accident happened on late Saturday night, March 7th, the same evening that Gregory Hawes was murdered, one block away. And I believe there's a high suspicion that the same individual is responsible. I'm very lucky in that I'm standing here. I could not go to Mr. Hawes's funeral, but I did meet him, and he attended my block club meetings. And we did lose a wonderful, gentle human being. I wish I had known Gregory more. But on that night, I went to Cedar Sinai, and I underwent eight hours of emergency surgery. And I'm very grateful to the staff there, and I was transferred to Kaiser West LA, and was discharged on March 20th. And as Ms. Smith mentioned, I'm lucky in that I'm a physical therapist, so I know what to do. However, I miss my coworkers. I work at County USC Medical Center, I've been a physical therapist there for over 20 years. And it's just sad that one individual in one split second has disrupted my life, and has really taken me out of a job that I love dearly. We're already understaffed. I wish my county board of supervisors could hear this. But I am very grateful for this opportunity, so when Ms. Smith asked me if I would come before you, I said definitely yes. I implore you to please consider her request. Thank you very much.
Councilman Ferraro, I know my 10 minutes are up. I just want to call to your attention, please, one other couple of things, real fast. Thank you for your forbearance. I did write to the President of the United States and asked for his assistance, the power of his office, to straighten out Los Angeles. I did get a response. I wrote to our governor and asked for assistance here, and I got a lovely letter from the Office of Criminal Justice Planning. This happened in August. I have here, Los Angeles Times editorial, July 11th, 1991, "Little Michelle Jones Is Dead: As She Crawled Up Her Grandmother's Steps, She Was Shot Down." I also have here an article from the Times, April 7th, 1988, where Supervisor Han asked for the National Guard, but the Times said that wasn't the right thing to do. I have also been asked to represent three other people, quickly in one second. Carmen, who is now at the Santa Monica Municipal Court, representing her family in Division 1. Her mother is practically a basket case, so Carmen had to go to ask for the death penalty for the man that shot her brother in the 7-11 store in Santa Monica. They had terrorized the neighborhood before they got there. I'm also asked to speak for Bill Norsworthy and his sister, whose father was beaten to death, 83 years old, in the 77th Division. All of these items have been forwarded to President Bush in August, those that hadn't already, those that had occurred already, and to Pete Wilson. We are overtaking too much time here, so...
Yes, here.
Mr. Mendelson, just two seconds more, please, Councilman, we won't come back, except in 30 days, I request to be placed on your agenda.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm here this morning to support... My name is Jerry Mendelson. Thank you, Mr. Holden. I'm here this morning to support members of my community who have lost family members, or personally been injured in violent street crime. We've met as a community quite a few times in the past month. Mr. Holden, members of his office have attended these meetings, and have looked to give us some support in what we're asking. We're asking that you personally support us, your constituents, in getting us more police protection. It's my feeling that if you got on the streets, police with a higher visibility, police who can either be on foot patrol or bike patrol, who can personally show their presence to members of the community, you could see preventive police work, so that you wouldn't have to have a police force that comes after the fact. And I'm asking that you release funds to give us what we need. I understand Mr. Holden has a motion on the agenda for more, an increased foot patrol. I ask that you take this into consideration and give us the citizens what we need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's more than all the time that we've had, so...
Well, please, it's very hard for me to get young men to support me because of the feminines movement. So I have this young man, please let him say something.
All right, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. My name is Michael Swift. I live on Victoria Avenue. Many times on the avenue, we call it the Victoria Freeway, because we get a lot of 60 mile an hour traffic on our freeway, and have not been able to do anything about that. But other than that, we don't see any police. We need police, we need the National Guard, we need protection from the thugs that inhabit our city. And I would please consider it your duty as representatives of the people to please take our pleadings, and to please, in 30 days, when we show up, please listen to us and unfreeze this hiring freeze. It's a very bad situation, and I think it's ironic that we honor the city of Berlin and recognize the city of Berlin as our sister city. I don't think the citizens of Berlin have the same problems walking down the street to the local store to get a quart of milk, as the citizens of Los Angeles do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, please...
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. And I would suggest that you write all that stuff, not to the president or to the governor, but to the mayor. We have our own budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
That completes the public comment period.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, next item.
Item two is a Continued Public Works Committee Report, Categorical Exemption and Inordinance.
Item number two, any discussion on item number two? Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, I move that this item be received and filed, because we've identified other, more compelling needs for the use of this facility.
Okay, is there any objections to receiving and filing? If not, that'll be the order. Next item.
Items three through six are committee reports.
Mr. President?
Ms. Walters?
I just have a quick question on item three, if I may. Is this the Los Angeles City Employees Credit Union?
I think so. It's my understanding it is.
It's my understanding that the headquarters of this credit union is in Glendale, that they moved it to Glendale? Is that true?
I have no idea.
I'd like to request information on that, and why the Employees Federal Credit Union of the City Employees of Los Angeles has moved its building to Glendale. And they put an ATM machine downtown, in LA.
Okay. Would you get that information for Mrs. Walters and for the rest of us? That is a good question, Mrs. Walters. All right, we have three, four, five, and six. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye. Mr. President, may I ask for reconsideration of item three, and let's continue it until we get the information?
There's no objections, we'll reconsider and continue the matter. We better have a certain date, so, you know, continue...
Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday? All right, there's no objections. Number three will be continued until Tuesday. Next item.
Items seven through 12 are Human Resources and Labor Relations and Budget and Finance Committee Reports.
Are there any specials there? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 13 is Communication from the Chairperson, Human Resources and Labor Relations Committee, motion required, 10 votes to consider.
Let me just say that we did have somebody on item number six, and they were in favor of it, so I'm sure they're happy with the result. Item number 13, any objections to considering that item? Seeing none, the matter is before us. Anybody want to be heard on item 13? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? Mrs. Picas moves on that. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye.
That is approved. Next item.
Items 14 through 16 are Communications from the Chairperson, Public Works Committee, categorical exemption on 15, motion required, 10 votes to consider.
Any objections to considering 14, 15, or 16? Seeing none, the public hearing is, I mean, the matters are before us. Anybody want to be heard on those items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll on 14 through 16, tabulate the vote. The motion is made by Mrs. Walters. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen aye.
That is approved. Next item.
Item... Item 18 is a City Engineer Report, Categorical Exemption, 30 Resolutions of Acceptance for Street Dedications. Motion required.
Anybody want to be heard on that item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mrs. Walters moves on 18. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item. She's got that look.
Item 19 is Continued City Engineer Report and Categorical Exemption. Motion required. And there's a 19A amendment on the desk.
Item number 19.
Mr. President, pardon me. May I call your attention to 19A, an amendment that I'm submitting? It's been circulated.
Yeah, we have 19A on the desk. Mr. Thomas, you want to tell us what that's about?
It essentially says that the petitioner dedicate a two-foot-wide by 20-foot-long onsite public street easement along Western Avenue and a three-foot-wide by 20-foot-long onsite public street easement along with Adams Boulevard for transit shelter purposes over the property substantially, as shown colored on the blue on the attached exhibit. And all that's built into the motion. And this is simply an ameasment and amendment that has already been seen by those who would be concerned about it, and I think it's an appropriate thing to do, Mr. President.
What?
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah.
Mark, you going to say something else?
Nothing other than the petitioners have agreed to it.
Okay. We have 19A before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Now we have 19 as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 17 is a Communication from the Chairperson, Public Works Committee. 10 votes to consider. Motion required.
Well, that's the only special we have, so let's take it. First of all, is there any objection to considering the item? Seeing none, the matter is before us. Anybody want to be heard? We have Larry Brown that wants to be heard on this. Mr. Brown?
To the council president and council members, I'm here -- first of all, let me identify myself. Larry Brown, I'm president of the Letter Carriers Union here in LA, and I'm here speaking on item number 20. Item number 20 deals with reward for the arrest and conviction of murderers who killed Jody Tolliver. Mr. Tolliver, who was a 35-year employee of the postal service, the majority of that time, he was a letter carrier, and throughout his career worked with young people in the community. Ironic, the night that Mr. Tolliver was shot and killed was at Harvard Playground after a baseball game. We feel that offering this $10,000 reward will send a message that life is precious and that random violence will not be tolerated in the city of LA and that community people and citizens have a right to go to parks and public places and feel that they can be safe, take their families, and feel secure. The speakers before me repeatedly told how different victims have been killed. They requested for the increase in police visibility and protection. We also go along with that. But we also feel that in approving this reward, we might flush out the perpetrators of this crime. And I ask the council members to vote yes on item number 20.
Twenty before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas, did you want to be heard?
Yes, Mr. President. Let me just simply say, given the nature of this tragedy, and it's already obvious what makes it even worse tragedy than usual, someone who has worked for the length of time that Mr. Tolliver worked and to have his life taken in such a senseless and violent way is something that can't be said enough about. Ordinarily, the rewards for such acts of violence are at the level of $25,000, and it should be consistent with that as the maximum to send a clear message to the citizenry of Los Angeles that we take this matter seriously and certainly to those who are responsible for it, that we have every intent to make sure that they are apprehended and that justice is done. So I would move that it be amended accordingly to reflect $25,000.
Okay. Mr. Holden, did you want to say something?
Yeah. I join, of course, seconding this motion with Mr. Thomas. Just another clear indication that it's a criminal who's going free. And they're going free because I don't think that we're being as responsive as we perhaps ought to be. It's been reported that there are $8 to $10 million in the police account in salary savings. And you all know that we had a very successful program when we had the Footbeat program, and they had 18 hotspots. They were walking throughout the city, and the report showed that the murder rate went down to zero. Now, Ms. Haas lives in my district. Her brother was killed. The other lady, I think, lives in Mark Billy Thomas District. That was Southwest Division. But they live all over the city, and they have the same story to tell. And that is that they're being shot down in the street in cold blood, and nothing's being done while we cut the budget of the police department. So I just kind of think we've got to be more sensitive and more concerned about the real needs of the people of this city. I mean, it's not much, doesn't make much sense to have a job if you can't walk the street or drive to work and feel safe. As one of the people testified earlier, that in Berlin, they could walk to the grocery store, but in Los Angeles, not without putting your life at stake. And that's really a sad state to have the city of Los Angeles be considered that it's just that unsafe. And I would hope that, of course, we vote for this motion so we can apprehend the killer who was responsible for taking Mr. Tolliver's life. But I think we have to do more than that. The time has come to do more than that. We've been penny-wise and pound-foolish. We have to give the people of this city more protection in the future than we have in the past. And I think we have to knock off the nonsense, especially when it costs so little. $250,000 a month is nothing to speak of when you talk about overtime.
Mr. Holden, I appreciate what you're saying, but we are talking about item number 20.
We are talking about life and death.
We're talking about item 20.
Life and death in the city of Los Angeles and how much it costs. And really, this is $25,000 reward. Certainly, an answer prevention, Mr. President, is better than a pond of cure. And I see no reason why we are not to reactivate that program to prevent these kinds of tragic deaths.
I think that's $10,000. Isn't that right, Mr.?
No, it's $25,000. He just amended it to be-
Amended it to 25.
And I second the motion along with Mr. Wax, and that's appropriate.
All right. Mr. Alatorre?
I'd like to move the previous question.
Okay. Prepare the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Now we have 19 -- 20A, is it, Mark?
20 as amended.
20 as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved.
Mr. President, pardon me. Would that go forthwith?
Forthwith on that item. We'll now have item number 17. There's no objection to considering 17. Anybody want to be heard on 17? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We do have 17 before us now. Mr. Wu? Mr. Wu, did you want to be heard on 17?
Mr. President, I wanted to call 17 special because there are questions I want to ask to the city engineer. Is Mr. Horry or Mr. McPherson here on this item?
We have a city engineer right here.
Okay. Let's see. I think it may be more appropriate for me to continue this until the next day. I have a letter dated March 18th, which was never answered by the city engineer, and I'd rather have Mr. Horry here. So if -- my request is we continue it until the next council meeting.
Okay. Is there any objection to considering 17 until the next meeting? Seeing none, that'll be the order. Next item.
Motions for posting and referral.
There's no objections. Unanimous vote.
Special one is on the desk. City attorney will explain special one.
Yes, this is a -- is being brought in today as a special. The Harbor Department was informed on April the 6th by the South Coast Air Quality Management District that they were denying the application for a permit for the dry bulk terminal. The Harbor Department only has until April the 13th, which is Monday, to file an appeal. The Harbor Department's Board took an action on the 8th for the hiring of outside counsel to assist them in this matter. The council is required to concur in any such action, and that's why the matter is before you today. The council would first make the findings that there is a need to act today, and if the council wishes to get into the substance of the dispute, we would suggest they go in -- we go into closed session. But that's only if you wish to get into the substance of the dispute with the South Coast Air Quality Management District. So the first action should be the necessary findings.
Okay. Mr. Yaroslavski?
I --
Oh, wait a while. We've got to -- we have to vote on the findings first. Prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, the matter is before us. Mr. Yaroslavski?
What is the -- what is this issue about? Is this about a dry what facility?
It's a dry bulk terminal represented from the-
A dry what?
Bulk. B-U-L-K.
Dry bulk.
Terminal.
Is this the --
We have the city attorney here.
Is this the one that involved loading of coal and stuff?
That is correct.
That is correct. Isn't this the thing that's very controversial down there in the San Pedro area? People were concerned about the air pollution impacts that this was going to have. I'm not asking you to comment on the veracity of the concern, but isn't this the one that was controversial down there?
I am not aware.
It's been going on for several years.
It's been considered for several years, yes. It started in 1983.
I move we go into executive session so that we can discuss the substance of this.
Order. Can I make a suggestion? Ms. Flores is not here today.
I know, and that was one of the things I was-
Why don't we continue this matter until the next day she's here?
No, they have to file the appeal by Monday at the latest, so they're-
Okay. Then we'll have to take it up today, then.
So that's my motion that we go-
Any objection to going into executive session on this item? Seeing none, the matter will be -- we will hold it on the desk and go into executive. Let's clear the rest of the stuff off the desk.
Counselman Bernson has requests to be excused. Personal business, April 29th. That'll leave council with 11 members. A motion is required.
Okay. There's -- it doesn't meet with the requirements?
It leaves 11 members.
Okay. Mrs. Picas moves. Unanimous vote. Next item.
Motions for posting and referral.
There's no objection. Unanimous vote.
That clears the desk except for special one.
Okay. We have an executive session, so will everybody please leave the council chamber, Sergeant? Sergeant, would you throw this guy out? Soon as a room -- okay, we're back in session. The next item.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
We have some adjourning motions. Would everybody please stand? All of you remember Gary Townsend, who got us in that ethics mess? Members of the council, a very prominent person of old family of Los Angeles, Marion Mullins Hancock passed away. His family developed the Land Grant Rancho La Brea. She survived by a niece, and she was -- lived a long life, and I'd ask we adjourn in her memory. All members.
Catherine Dorthea Crouch. She's the wife of Bishop Benjamin Crouch of the Christ Memorial Church in Pecoma and the mother of the famous gospel singers Andrea and Sandra Crouch, passed away, and I'd ask the council to adjourn out of respect for her memory.
Ms. Glanter?
Did we already adjourn in memory of Molly Pecan? Okay, I would like to-
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Daniel Grad. Mr. Grad serves as a civilian in the United States Navy. During World War II, he was active in the Clark Pepper Senior Citizen Center, where he was a trustee on the Board of Directors. That's in my district. He was also an active member of the Brene David Jodea since 1987. We ask that we adjourn in memory of Harold Garibaldi. Mr. Garibaldi served the United States Air Force 1941 to 1945. He worked for the United States Postal Service for 32 years and was a member of the Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity, was a volunteer at Clark Pepper Senior Citizen Center. We ask that we adjourn in his memory also.
Mr. Wax?
In the memory of Will Thornberry. He was-
Can we do that jointly with you?
Yeah. He was the host and DJ on KLON for a long time, the all-jazz station, and well-known and well-respected. And he leaves his wife, the singer, jazz singer Ruth Price, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Mr. Wu?
I wanted to do that jointly, then.
All right. Any others? Aye, the council is adjourned.